Good afternoon, everyone. It's so nice to have you all together. The Board of Education is meeting today in a work session. Board Policy BD, types of meetings, describes the six types of Board of Education meetings. This is one of the six. A work session may be scheduled from time to time to provide Board members with the opportunity to plan and discuss without formal action. Topics to be discussed are announced publicly, and this session will be conducted, as all work sessions, in accordance with state law and Board policy. So our topic of the work session this afternoon is the superintendent's response to the Washington County Board of Education's July 19, 2021, charge to review and make recommendations for school facilities with current and projected enrollments of less than 60% state-rated capacity. So, Dr. Michael, do you have some opening remarks you would like to make?
Yes. This is—
Williams, what I like to do is share a PowerPoint with the Board members.
It's really a guide through the superintendent's report. We'd be glad to take questions as we go through the report, so feel free to interrupt me as we go through this PowerPoint presentation. So there'll be some general summaries of what's in the report. I do have some other staff members that are going to be joining on certain slides to present additional information. So again, you determine for yourself if you'd like to interject during the report or listen to the whole slide presentation, ask questions later. It doesn't matter to us as staff. It might be in response to some of your questions, I might ask you to hold on because an answer that's coming up on the next—you know, on an upcoming slide. So with that, we'll start to look at the PowerPoint. You know, I kind of looked at a timeline of where we've been with this process. I'm just going to mention the charge here in a few minutes, the FEAC report, superintendent's recommendations, and then the work sessions, obviously, where we are today. So as we look at the FEAC charge, this came from the Board of Education, came from you on January 19th. Waiting for the slide to advance. Maybe it's advancing, I don't know. But that is straight from the Board's charge, quoted from the charge. So in essence, you asked the FEAC Committee, the Facilities Enrollment Advisory Committee, to look at all the schools that currently are at 60% capacity or projected in the near future to be at 60% capacity. And I think this was a wise charge by the Board. You know, we have great need to, in an efficient manner, utilize our space, utilize our resources to heat, cool, maintain a building that's 40% empty for a long period of time, may or may not be appropriate. So that was the charge from the Board on the 19th. Also part of that charge and part of any FEAC effort and any Board effort, there are eight items that are required by COMAR to be looked at carefully. In the superintendent's report, I didn't break down each one of these specifically, as noted here, particularly items like, you know, racial composition of the student body, things like that. That information is accurately reported in the FEAC report. As I reviewed the FEAC report, I found it to be very accurate. Some of the changes that I have made and noted, particularly in transportation, I would probably have some question about some of the FEAC information there, and I think some of that's been clarified as they went through their various meetings. But most of these items are either covered in my report or specifically recovered accurately in the FEAC report. So we move on from the charge to the work of the FEAC Committee on April 20th. So Chad Chriswell, some leadership of the FEAC Committee came to the Board, and they basically made—you know, took a look at five schools and made several recommendations. So in short, the FEAC's recommendations were to have Marshall Street remain open, Clear Spring Middle School remain open, Clear Spring High School remain open, all facilities that were at and/or projected to be below 60% capacity. Also in that report, it recommended the closure of Cascade Elementary School and the closure of Hancock Middle Senior High School. So as we move on to May 4th, last Tuesday, kind of from the FEAC report to my report, which you all had a copy of last week. I made that report publicly, and I did note some changes to the FEAC's recommendations, more specifically to Hancock Middle Senior High School. And at this point, we're here at the work session today, and we'll go through those recommendations a little bit more carefully. So the first recommendation in the superintendent's report mirrors that of the FEAC report. I too recommend that we keep Marshall Street, Clear Spring High School, and Clear Spring Middle School open. As we look a little closer at Marshall Street, you know, the student population there is the special education population. It also—Marshall Street is a school for many of our medically fragile children. Some of our children are bedridden or wheelchair-bound ridden, have a lot of medical issues, have nursing requirements, cannot circulate in the regular population for medical reasons. We also have special ed children there that have various cognitive abilities, and the school's specifically laid out to address their needs. In doing so, it does require a substantial amount of more space than a normal school would. So even though Marshall Street is fairly large, because it's identified as a special ed facility, each of the rooms is assessed at approximately 10 students per room. Where in a normal school, it'd be somewhere between 22 to 25 students. So if we were to utilize this building as a traditional elementary, middle, or high school, its capacity would be somewhere between 300 and 400 students. But as a special ed center, its capacity is 150 for state-rated capacity. I did make a recommendation in my report, and it's not something the Board would have to take any action on, but there is space at Marshall Street, and there may be occasions we've used some of that space off and on for various reasons. But you know, something like a three-year-old program or an overflow of a four-year-old pre-K program, something like that, I think would be an appropriate use of that space. It would not interfere with the Marshall Street students. It might even be kind of a welcome mix to Marshall Street. I think there would be some space there for some additional small programming if the Board chose to do that. In general, I'm agreeing with the FEAC report to leave Marshall Street open. We looked a little bit at the history of Marshall Street. You can see back at one point, you know, they ran about 100 students, and then you can see that substantial drop-off. That drop-off is really the time period that many of the students started to move out into home schools, the home school of their district, if they were able. So our medically fragile children most likely weren't part of that population that moved out, but some of our children from very early ages, all the way up through, you know, their time of earning a certificate or if they were capable of graduating, probably pushed out into the schools. You can see in the timeline, we have a line there at 2004, and it was actually implemented in 2005, where after we left Job Development Center, which was in Smithburg, a building up next to the reservoir there in Smithburg, we left open for many, many years after it too had declined substantially. So this is kind of the good part of the Board's charge, that we take a look at these facilities. But anyhow, those two facilities combined, and we eventually turned the Job Development Center property back over to the county, and I think subsequently it's now been sold. But that was a decision that was long time in the making. You can see for a long period of time, eight, 10 years, that Marshall Street ran with about 50 students, and it had a capacity of 150 students. I do think during that time, there was some other utilization of space. Then 2005, Job Development Center, Marshall Street were combined into that same building. You can see the numbers picked back up to about 100. As we look at projections going forward, you know, we generally, and Chad and his team, as they do projections, we generally estimate about 80 students there. It seems to have been fairly steady as we look at a trend line for Marshall Street. You know, other than that dip when JD's Job Development Program was not added in there, it's generally remained fairly flat. So we move on to Clear Spring High School. Just a brief summary there. Clear Spring High School's a traditional 9 through 12 school. Also has a RISE program, which is our autistic program, and a connections program, which is a program primarily for our non-diploma-bound students that are in grades 9 to 12, or in that age span of 9 to 12. It does have six completer programs, meaning our career and technology education completer programs generally requires at least four courses to complete those programs, or six of those there, 19 advanced place programs, and then you can see the list of athletic programs that exist at Clear Spring. So Clear Spring pretty much offers all the athletic programs, with the exception of wrestling and lacrosse, off and on sometimes with something like cross-country or something like that. But they are also one of our strongholds for Unified Sports, which is a sports program for a mixture of special needs children and other children. They have quite a few state championships to be proud of there. We ran the student-teacher ratios, this is just straight students to teachers, number of students divided by the number of teachers. You can see what it is, 16.2. It doesn't account for planning periods or specialized teachers that wouldn't have teaching assignments. Average class size there, 19.4. And as we look at seats that'd be available in 2022, which would be the year that another recommendation, a little bit later in the report, would be when additional students might be added to that facility if the Board chose to vote that way, there's at least 262 seats, we estimate, to be available there in 2022. It is worth noting, and you'll see it on the next slide, the state-rated capacity of Clear Spring High School is 656 students. 656 students. I think, and we don't have records—I don't want to say we don't have records to go back this far—we couldn't find records that are equally aligned with the numbers that we have here for when I was teaching there in 1979, but I'm pretty sure then we were close to 600 students. And the facility was almost brand-new, and it wouldn't have been designed to have 400 or 500 children in if they designed it for 656. Projections at that time must have been that would have approximately somewhere in the vicinity of 656 students. You can see the history of Clear Springs enrollment. It has been like 450-ish, 29 years ago. It kind of came back up, but I can assure you, this is not its all-time high, you know, up above 500, and then it's kind of dropped back down, and now it's declining. As we look at the projections for Clear Spring, and again, I think this is something important for the Board to note, the projections for Clear Spring have it declining substantially. And so smaller grades that have moved through the elementary, moved into the middle school, and are now soon to all move into the high school, we're going to see a substantial decline in the Clear Spring High School population without any additional changes. And again, keep in mind, this is a building that has a capacity for 656 students, and it will very soon have less than 400 students in the buildings. We look at the trend line for Clear Spring High School. I think if it went on back, I think we'd actually see the trend line kind of be higher and then just kind of declining to what I think will be its lowest enrollment since that school opened in the 70s. We move on to Clear Spring Middle School. Again, a traditional middle school of grade 6 to 8. It also has a RISE and connection program, so autistic students come from middle school with their RISE program, connection program, are non-diploma-bound students, and move right into the high school to have that experience still there on the same campus. Teacher ratio there, 14.2, class size, 17. As we look into September of 2022, we have seat capacity there also of an additional 260 seats. Again, I would bring your attention to the state-rated capacity of that building, 605. Again, we'd have to go back into the 70s and look at why they built a school for 605 students, but I think it was, again, when I was there in the late 70s, they were a school of 500-plus students there at the middle school. So as we look at their historic enrollment, again, up and down over the last 29 years, but since about 2010 starts kind of a decline. We think it's pretty much reached about as low as it's going to go from what we can see coming from the elementary and a couple other feeders. But as we look at their projections, you can see it'll be relatively flat without any other changes. Again, a building with a capacity of 605. So part of our charge and part of what I hear from county commissioners is we need to be more efficient, we need to live within our means. I think we need to take a hard look at things when we have seat capacity of 605 with 330 students. Look, the trend line with this, you can just see we're generally declining for what we can see for the foreseeable future. So move on to Recommendation 2. I agree with FEAC's report for Recommendation 2. It recommended that we close Cascade and that students at Cascade would be redistricted, and that process would need to be—yet to be determined fully. But I do think there's a natural line there for Cascade. When we—and you'll see in another section here in a minute—we did redistrict students to Cascade from Old Forge. It would seem like to me we'd probably go back to that natural dividing line. It almost splits the population of Cascade in half, and I think the students could easily be accommodated at two of the receiving schools, potentially Old Forge and Smithburg. But that was—that's for another day. For right now, we need to work on the closure, and then FEAC will come back with the redistricting if that is the will of the Board that the school would close. As we look at Cascade's history, for those who've been around here for a long while, when Fort Ritchie was here and was opened—I mean, it's still here—but when it was open as a fort, there was just a 60 Minutes video clip on this past Sunday, it was pretty interesting, about the Ritchie Boys and what happened at Fort Ritchie, if you didn't know what was happening there. But when the fort closed through the BRAC Commission and those things, things started to change pretty rapidly. The state-rated capacity noted here, 278, does not include the old section of the building. So there's—I think it's a 1924 section of the building. That's a traditional look. There's long, tall windows, you know, stone foundation, brick at the top. Chalkboards are still there, chalk's still laying in chalk trays, as far as I know. Last time I was in that part of the building, just like they walked out, which I think has been all the way back into about 1995. It's been used for storage and various things, but very little's been done there, other than to keep the roof in good shape and keep that part of the building sealed up. But it would take quite a bit of work to put that back into space. So we've lowered the state-rated capacity there, just to indicate the 1965 portion, the newer portion of the building. Again, 1965, we're talking 35, 55 years ago at this point. 2010 is when we redistricted, so it started to come down to about 125, 30 students in 2009. The Board had a redistricting effort, and at that time, they moved students from Old Forge up the mountain, and that brought the enrollment back up to close to 200. It was a two-round school, meaning we had two first grades, two second grades, two third grades, et cetera. But since that time, it's been on a steady decline again. We have not changed the boundaries. There's very little development or housing construction, or the turnover of houses there are just not generating students, and we're heading back down to where we were prior to that redistricting in 2010. So as we look at those projections, we are counting for just a slight growth if anything happens at the fort, based on the information that we have there from one of the new owners on the fort property. But we would still see that as a one-round school, meaning one first grade, one second grade, one third grade, and you'll hear a little bit from Dr. Palmer in a minute about that. So again, as we look at the projections of that, if you kind of take out the fort closure and kind of get to with the fort being closed, the trend line is just relatively flat as we look through there. So in summary, there's a summary section here about enrollment and space there at surrounding schools. From what I—and I've obviously been to Smithburg and Old Forge multiple times this year, as has Dr. Palmer and some of the other senior staff members, I believe there's ample space to move all of the Cascade students into Old Forge and Smithburg without any other redistricting of moving any of the Old Forge or Smithburg students out of those schools. However, when we look at redistricting, we have a Tier 1, Tier 2 that we always look at. So when we look at a school and we're trying to determine capacity or arguing with the state or, you know, lobbying the state to build a school, they require us to look at surrounding schools, that would be Tier 1, and surrounding schools of those surrounding schools, which would be Tier 2. So as we look at Tier 1 and Tier 2 schools, there are about 350 empty seats right now between those schools listed there, Greenbrier, Eastern, Bangborn, Paramount, Ruthann Monroe. So there's ample capacity to close Cascade, and the students would still have a place to go. So with that, with Cascade, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Palmer, who's going to take us through the next couple sections.
Good afternoon. Implementing the recommendation to close Cascade Elementary would have additional academic benefits to the students of Cascade and also benefit the students of Smithburg Elementary and Old Forge Elementary. Do I need to pull it closer?
Yep.
Some of these benefits include students having access to full-time staff and resources. Is that better? Teachers able to collaborate with others, teaching the same curriculum, and students able to have interactions with a wider variety of classmates. With the closing of Cascade and redistricting efforts, both Smithburg and Old Forge could become consistent, three-round schools in each grade level. This would allow for consistency with staffing and accesses to resources daily for all students. Smithburg Elementary and Old Forge Elementary have some grade levels that have two classes and some that have three classes. The bubble of three-round classes causes teachers to need to switch grade levels on a regular basis, meaning one year they could be teaching a first-grade class, and the following year it could be grade 2. The bubble of three-round continues to cause issues and changes yearly for teachers. With Cascade only being a one-round school, it limits the ability to be able to plan and collaborate with another staff member, teaching the same curriculum. In years past, Cascade has planned with staff from other buildings in order to have a teammate. Top researchers on improving student achievement and growth have indicated when a team of individuals share the belief that through their unified efforts, they can overcome challenges and produce intended results, groups are more effective. In schools, when educators believe in their combined ability to influence student outcomes, there are significantly higher levels of student achievement. In a school that has only one round, this ability to be able to be a grade-level team working together to improve student achievement is not available. In larger schools with multiple classes in each grade level, principals are able to balance class sizes and needs of students with multiple classes. At Cascade, being only one round, this has caused some classes to be as large as 31 students in one class or grade level and only seven in another class or grade level. Multiple classes per grade also provide for diverse learning environment for students. Students at Cascade are essentially with the same classmates from pre-K through grade 5. Being in a school with multiple classes per grade level provides students the chance each year to learn with a different group of students, to hear diverse opinions and perspectives, and to have the opportunity to develop relationships with students from the entire Smithburg community. With the high per pupil cost at Cascade, we've had to determine ways for WCPS to reduce the cost of running a small school like Cascade. The principal is an 11-month employee, and the secretary is 10-month. This causes issues for some families in the summer when they want to enroll their children in school. Students would benefit from full-time music, art, library, media, physical education, lead teacher, gifted and talented services, special education staff, and counseling services at both Smithburg and Old Forge, where they currently serve as itinerant staff at Cascade Elementary. Because of the size, Cascade has a counselor two days per week. The counselor is not available for three days if a student has a crisis or need. We are seeing needs at the elementary level that we have never experienced in the past, and therefore, because of the low enrollment at Cascade, we cannot provide additional services with only 130 students when we have to provide for these same growing needs throughout our district.
Okay, and I think we'll move on to our next topic, which—Mr. Prew, I think you're going to take the next topic, which is transportation.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. I think over the last number of weeks, we've had an opportunity to have our transportation team really dig into routing, really looking at where the students live within the Cascade attended zone, make a few speculations potentially to what might be dividing lines if the school were to close and we had some redistricting. When you consider what the transportation table looks like that was in the superintendent's report, what you're really looking at is really a flip of times. Students that currently live in and around the Cascade school, actually in Cascade, would now have longer times compared to the shorter times they have now. But as you come down out of Cascade and you get closer to the town of Smithburg and near the Old Forge School, those times which are currently longer would be shorter. I think what's key, and I think what we'll see on the next slide, is again, you know, utilizing the existing buses, 75% of the students from Cascade Elementary School would have roughly the same ride time that they have, and about 40 minutes would be the maximum time. We really have focused on trying to minimize the times, keep them in line with what some of the longest students have within that district currently. And the Board would have an option, because of potential savings that I think we'll show you later, what I'll call opportunity costs, to decide to maybe add additional transportation in that region as well, if they wanted to limit those ride times even further and make them a little bit more amenable to families. Looking at economic development, I actually had an opportunity to go up to Cascade and have a discussion with the newest owner, the gentleman that just purchased—I think it's approximately 500 acres of the fort property. Look at a map and actually talk about what his development plans are, where he is in the process. You know, he's got great expectations for what's going to happen at the fort, but I'll give you what I think is a clear message that I received after speaking with the developer. The primary master plan is not yet complete. There is plan to do some renovation to existing townhomes that are on the fort property, on the property that he owns, to potentially have some families move back into Cascade as early as late summer, early fall. That's approximately 50 townhomes. Using our pupil generation rate, if they are full, that could be an expectation of approximately 16 students. Of course, split across, you know, seven grades when we consider pre-K all the way to grade 5. There are additional plans for townhomes—if you're familiar with the fort behind the barracks. Some of those townhomes are potentially are going to be age-restricted. Some of that space will also be commercial space. And then there's plans along Range Road for single-family homes, none of which is really defined yet in terms of how many homes are going to be. So to really speculate on what is going to be the impact in terms of enrollment of the development of Fort Ritchie, we really have limited information to go on at this point. At this—in addition to that, there's also a plan that's been submitted to the state—oh, excuse me—submitted to county planning staff for development of 36 townhomes on the property that's owned by JGBLI, which is the other developer at Cascade. That's been submitted for a couple of years. There is no movement on any of that. It's approximately 36 townhomes, which could only generate about 12 students. So that gives you a sense of what the economic plans are at this point at the fort, and the larger question remains really, you know, and while I think we all really hope that the developments take off there, is, you know, with declining enrollment and the way we've seen it around the county, not just in the Smithburg-Cascade area, but outside of the core of the county, you know, is it going to take off, really, is the question? I probably opinionated that a little too much. But looking at the facility with the recommendation, the plan would be that we would retain the facility in the short term. As you're probably aware, if the Board decides to close a facility, they have the option of retaining it. If they decide not to retain it, they have to revert it to the county, in which case the county then determines whether it's a facility they want to keep or they want to sell it. Staff would recommend that you retain the facility at this time, play a waiting game. Let's see what happens with the developments in the Cascade area. We can minimally leave the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system on, maintain, you know, protect the building from extreme highs, protect it from extreme lows, protect the envelope, maintain the roof, maintain windows and doors to mitigate any chance of mold. And then if it is needed, we could always do a refurbishment of that building and get it ready for new students and to be reopened if the facility's there, without having to, you know, sell it and then go, oh, and now we need a major project because now we need a building. Let's hold the building, let's play a wait-and-see game, is what would be staff's recommendation for you. Onto the financial savings. I think you saw that both in the FEAC report as well as the report from the superintendent. It's about $1 million savings, and again, opportunity costs. I think, you know, we'll talk about this as soon as we get to the next recommendation as well. It's really an opportunity for the Board to decide, how do I want to reallocate those funds? Is it funds I want to put in other programs? Is it fund I want to put in staffing in other places to look at some equity issues that we may have across the county? It's about nine—almost $980, $990,000 in staffing potential savings, and about $40,000 in utility savings with that building annually. It's about 13 staff makes up the savings there. And again, we would—as we shared with the FEAC Committee, you know, staff members would be absorbed into other locations. We'd be redeploying staff, you know, we'd amply have enough openings through natural attrition between retirements and resignations annually that no staff member should lose their job. We would absorb them to other locations. We would absorb them into other locations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prue. So we'll move on to recommendation three. This is one that I did change from FIAC's recommendation. FIAC's recommendation was to close the middle school and high school. I still see that as a great potential option, something that could be considered in the future maybe by the board. But my recommendation at this point, where I see the greatest disparity of opportunities for students is at the high school level. We really start to take a big change when we move to ninth grade of what opportunities are available for students, particularly in the academic setting. You know, a lot of people think it's just about advanced placement or something like that. None of that is what it is for me. It is just so limited. Eventually, we're probably going to have students down to one class, almost like a one-round going into high school at some point. And I just think those are too small numbers. It's not going to give the diversity of course opportunities that we want to see for our students. So I did modify this and, you know, we would have space to allow the middle school students to remain. I do still think they'd be at some disadvantage for educational opportunities. But in my recommendations, I'm recommending instead of moving all sixth through 12th grade students to Clear Spring Middle, Clear Spring High, to only move ninth through 12th grade to Clear Spring High. An option in that, and do that in September of 2022. So it wouldn't be this September, it'd be the following September. Subsection of that, that's in my report, that would not have to be a recommendation. It could just be something the board could allow, would be allow the seniors in that year to stay in the building. So allow for three more groups of graduation. This current group coming up for this year. Next June would be another group that would graduate, and the following year would be another group that would graduate. It would just be another way of having transition for some of the older students that have been in Hancock for a longer period of time. They too would have the option to go ahead and go to Clear Spring as a senior or they could stay at Hancock for one additional year. For middle school, what I would recommend is, and I think this could start as soon as this September, but when we do, you could even wait till '22. The middle school students that would want to attend Clear Spring Middle School for some reason, maybe want to make the transition to the Clear Spring community for when they get to high school. Maybe there is something there, a RISE program, Connection Program, academic opportunity there that doesn't exist at Hancock. They too would be able to go, but it wouldn't be all six through eight. You'd have the, the main course would be to stay at Hancock. The option would be to take advantage of buses that are already going to Clear Spring and ride those buses. There is a possibility, and I noted this in my report, you could provide that bus as early as this year. It wouldn't be door-side service like house-to-house, but it would leave Hancock, take students, and get the Clear Spring on time. And then it would return after the school day for transition if parents wanted to go ahead and have their child start that transition now. Maybe your child is just now moving into sixth grade and you want to go ahead and make that transition. Maybe your child's going to be a ninth grader in two years. So you go ahead and you want to make, have your child have that transition during their eighth-grade year to become acclimated to Clear Springs. So when they move into ninth grade, they're familiar with more students. It just provides more choice and opportunity for parents. So again, that's not anything the board would have to vote on. It's just a concept that'd be available. It'd almost be the equivalent of an open school where you don't have to apply for special permission. We have the space at Clear Spring Middle and all students would be welcome to come if they so desired. And we'd also remain open, sixth through eighth grade at Hancock indefinitely. The other one again is a possibility. It doesn't have to be, you know, something voted on and determined by the board immediately. But I do see the opportunity to combine. Instead of being a middle, senior, high, it could be an elementary, middle school in the current facility. One of the challenges at the elementary, although it's not noticed in the standpoint of noise as it is at a couple of our schools, it's just they have so many small spaces where we try to create portable walls there. They're kind of a carpet petition-type unit that we put in there three or four years ago, similar to Hickory Elementary. They're not full walls, they're not drywall or anything like that. But the other facility, if they moved across the street, there would be plenty of space for each teacher to have their own classroom. Right now, the classrooms at Hancock do not have individualized restrooms like we have in some of our schools. So that would not be a loss moving over to the other facility. I think we'd want to make some modernizations and some enhancements to the current Hancock Middle, Senior, High School facility to accommodate elementary students, but I don't think any of that would be significant. So I just think it would be a great opportunity to take advantage of the current facility with two gymnasiums, a larger cafeteria, you know, hallways, enclosed rooms, security features, larger parking lot, availability of some practice fields. We would move playground materials, probably purchase new playground materials. And I believe we have ample space there up on the upper area to have several playgrounds surrounding the building if the board chose to do that. As we look at Hancock Middle, Senior, High School history, again, we're looking at a school that was built for 591 students. So we don't have history back further than 29 years. And some of the letters that people wrote to us, they described graduating with 60, 70 peers. If that was true, certainly in that building with seven grades, it could have been a building of 500, 600 at some point. I just don't know the history beyond 1992. But we were over 400 when I was there. In the mid-'90s, we were right around 400. And then we started to decline. And it's just been a steady decline over the last number of years. As we look at our projections, what we can see coming from the elementary and what we know about in-migration, out-migration, this is going to continue to decline at Hancock Middle, Senior, High School. So we're looking at, again, a facility of 591 with having less than 200 students occupying the building in the very near future. And then as we look at the trend line with this, you know, just pretty much a steep decline. It's difficult to determine where it would go from there, but I would think that we're probably flattening out there. There would be enough in and out migration, turnover of houses that would probably remain fairly steady. Another thing we need to keep in mind as we look at the next chart, when we say, you know, we're heading for under 200 students at Hancock Middle, Senior, High School, again, we need to remember this is a middle school and a high school. So it's not a middle school of 200 students and it's not a high school of 200 students. It is a middle school of less than 100 students here soon and a high school of less than 100 students. When you say that to other people, from other people that have lobbied for things, for people that were at the school years ago when it was 400 or 500 students, you know, they kind of paused and had to think about that for a minute because they'd liked their nice, small school, but they're talking about a school when it was 400. Now we're talking about a school, middle school again, of less than 100, high school of less than 100. As you kind of look across the chart, you can just kind of see we have some larger classes that are going to be purging out and we're estimating we would just remain flat. These are projections from last year. On June 1st, you're going to see some new projections that Chad's working on. It'll be part of the educational master plan. We're going to bring these numbers up, five or six students in anticipation of some very minor developments that could happen there in Hancock that will account for some possible growth to occur there. But their economic plan does not show a housing development of any significance. So we might modify those numbers when you see the projections in June. One thing I do want to note, if you look across the Clear Spring High School line, again, a school built for 656 students currently, pre-pandemic, 460 students. Currently, 470, 470 students. You had a large group move earlier into the high school, but we can see what's coming through the elementary and middle school. They are going to steadily decline to about 360 students in 2029 based on the information we have right now. If you take 359 and look up to the Hancock line and we anticipate they're going to decline, let's say it's 100, just to make it easy. That 100 students from Hancock combined with the 360, 359 students from Clear Spring, those two numbers together, if you look all the way back to where we are this year, we'll take the school back to the enrollment that we're currently, currently have at Clear Spring High School. Again, 359 plus 100 would be 459. You know, very similar to the 470 that we have right now. So with the decline of both Hancock High, the decline of both Clear Spring High, we're talking about, we're just trying to maintain, at that point, we'd be just maintaining Clear Spring High at approximately the space that it has right now. As we go to the next slide and look at kind of a summary of this, when we look at space between the middle school and the high school, now this is both schools combined, there are 522 empty seats, 522 empty seats. And that is not counting the further decline of Clear Spring High School between the middle school and the high school at Clear Spring. Again, I think we are charged with looking at our resources and evaluating that carefully. And I think the board was wise to take a hard look at these things. And at this point, for educational opportunities, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Akers.
Thank you. Implementing the recommendation to have Hancock's high school students attend Clear Spring High School would have significant academic benefits to the students of both schools. The students from Hancock would immediately have access to 19 AP classes and four dual-credit classes rather than the six AP classes and one dual-credit course currently available at Hancock Middle, Senior, High School. The students from Hancock would immediately have access to six Career Technology Education completer programs rather than the three programs currently available at Hancock. The Career Technology Education programs available at Clear Spring High School are career research and development, childcare, marketing, power mechanics, software, and the agricultural academy. Students from Hancock would still be able to participate in band and art, plus they would have access to choir, drama, and orchestra programs at Clear Spring that are not currently available at Hancock. In addition to having access to a wider variety of educational opportunities, the students from Hancock will have a much better chance of getting into the courses they want to take each year because Clear Spring High School has more sections of common courses than Hancock, which means it's easier to schedule students into the classes they need or want. The benefit of this recommendation for Clear Spring High School students is that the addition of the students from Hancock will help prevent the potential loss of courses and programs that might otherwise happen because Clear Spring's enrollment is declining. To the next slide, please. Implementing the recommendation would also have benefits for both schools, both sets of students and extracurricular programs. Currently, Hancock's students have access to eight varsity and three junior varsity athletic teams. At Clear Spring, they will have access to 12 varsity and seven junior varsity teams. The additional in sports include boys' and girls' soccer, golf, and tennis. The advantage of having the additional JV teams is that more students get to participate and the varsity teams are more competitive because the athletes have more playing experience before participating at the varsity level. The students from Hancock would also have access to three unified sports teams, bocce, tennis, and track. Again, the benefit for Clear Spring students is that the expanded student body will help ensure the athletic program stays viable and competitive. Next slide, please. So this slide shows enrollment in grades nine through 11 that the Maryland Public Secondary Schools Athletic Association uses to classify schools. These are all of the high schools classified as 1A. You can see Washington County Schools in yellow, Frederick in green, and Allegheny in blue. Many factors go into having a competitive sports team, but a major factor is the number of students or potential athletes in a school. This chart shows why Hancock has typically not been able to compete with other Washington County public schools in most sports and how combining the two schools will help their team stay competitive. You'll, if you look, you can see if you add the two schools together, the nine through 11 enrollment would be 490, which would place them just above Benjamin Franklin High School, which puts them, you know, above the middle of the pack for 1A schools, where they would have a much better ability to compete in playoffs and state championships, things of those nature.
From a transportation perspective, again, similar to Cascade, we've had an opportunity to really reevaluate the bus routing, to really look at some of the challenges that are present in the unique topographical environment that is the Hancock region. In the superintendent's recommendation, we actually are showing the chart here with the inclusion of two additional buses in the Hancock area. It did a couple of things for us. One, it allows us to gather students more efficiently. Clearly, the bus routes themselves will be minimized. You know, we try to target in a lot of places, you know, somewhere between 35 and 55 students on a bus. And that's already not possible in the Hancock region. But some of the new buses that we would add might only have 10 or 12 students. But the goal here is to most efficiently gather students from their homes, from their current bus stops, and see if we can get them to Clear Spring a little bit quicker. So most of the buses that were added typically are in the region west of town so that we can make those runs. A lot of those areas, we have, as we've analyzed the routes, lots of stops, lots of turns, double backs, where we get to a spot where the bus actually has to stop, turn around, and head back out towards the main road. So we minimize some of those downtimes by adding additional buses. What you can see from the chart really, where the middle column is existing Hancock routes and the columns to the right are proposed routes, while the majority of students are going to still have longer rides, that is true. There is a pocket of the schools enrollment that currently lives in town that has a very short ride to the school. But in aggregate, no student or no groups of students, I don't want to make sure I'm not singling out a particular student, but in theory, no student has a longer bus ride than any student currently has today. And all of those bus rides really come down in between 50 and 60 minutes. A bonus to this actually would be that a student that takes a hub bus, let's say, to further come into Technical High School or into Barbour Ingram School for the Arts that lives and has one of the longest bus rides would now have a shorter ride from their home high school into Tech High and into Barbara Ingram. So if you currently have a 60-minute ride just to get to Hancock, you then have the distance, let's say it's 30 minutes, from Hancock to Technical High School for a 90-minute ride. Moving forward, your 60-minute ride is only, is going to be to Clear Spring. And if the time is now cut in half because you're halfway now to Technical High School, now your bus ride to Tech High is 75. So that is an added benefit for the students that do choose to take that route. I think the next slide, please. Again, 75% of high school students would have less than a 40-minute bus ride to Clear Spring High School and no high school student would have a bus ride longer than 60 minutes. And staff has worked very hard to look at some routing and to utilize some potential savings that we'll talk about later to offset ride times. And then definitely, you know, it was a concern of the committee. Having been in each of those committee meetings, it was a concern of staff and definitely has been a concern of our community as we've seen some of the public comment that's come in, both to the committee and into the Board of Education at this point. Looking at economic development, I had an opportunity to head out and spend a couple of hours with the Hancock Town Manager. We actually drove around town and looked at a lot of the things that are going on. I know the town submitted their economic development plan to the FIAC committee. Asked a lot of questions about things that were going on. The first and foremost thing I think that Hancock has going that really needs to come to fruition before you see any growth in the community in Hancock is the refurbishment of their wastewater and their drinking water systems. They've got a program in place, it's in design. It is currently about 60% funded, fully under grant funding, both from the state of Maryland and also from Department of Agri Development. It's about a $30 million program. And at this point, its anticipated completion is October of 2023. Much of the development of the community hinges on that coming to fruition and being completed. So, and what they filed for are competitive grants. It's not automatic money coming from those resources. So the grant funding has to continue to come forward and then it has to be put into place and actually construction completed. And looking at some of the developments, actually, our educational facility master plan has two developments that have been on the books in Hancock for quite some time. I think one of them was added to the EFMP in 2014. The other was added in 2018 when the town actually said to us on our normal call, annual call, hey, and we found this plan that's been here. So we're not sure when that plan, that development plan was actually submitted to the town, but that was in 2018. that was in 2018 when we received that information. And those two developments account for about 100 homes. When you're looking at the high school level, based on probably a mix of what we're going to see there between single-family and townhomes, you're looking at about an additional 17 students if those developments come to fruition. And again, they have been, the one in particular has been on the books since at least 2014. And actually, their permits have expired, and they have to resubmit for stormwater permits, which again is contingent on the update to the wastewater and the wastewater plans in the town of Hancock. Additionally, there's additional plans for some development out at Warfordsburg Road, some townhomes, some single fans, but nothing has really been submitted to county planning or the town of Hancock at this point. And again, based on the numbers that I heard, that really are unofficial, you're talking about a handful of students, six, eight, 10 students across the grade levels. So it really provides minimal impact to the enrollment of the school. A lot of what's in the economic plan talks about jobs. And I think one of the challenges in thinking about jobs with the town of Hancock and how it then relates and correlates to school enrollment really comes down to that the town is only so many miles wide. Granted, our attendant zone area extends far to the west, far to the east, but when you start going north and south, now you're into Fulton County, now you're into, just off the top of my head, into Morgan County, West Virginia, and so out of our district. And I think while they're creating jobs, I think there's also potential employees in each of those areas across state lines that are going to fill those and not necessarily breed additional immigration into the community. And I think that's, you know, not necessarily a challenge, but at least for us, we have to consider whether that's going to generate enrollment. Looking at the facility use, I think as Dr. Michael mentioned, by merging the elementary with the middle school into the high school building, you maintain a lot of things that are great. You maintain the community use gym for the community. We maintain the athletic fields that can be used by community programs. There's always the potential that the new combined high school could also host games at the Hancock Fields in addition to the Clear Spring Fields, so not everything is in Clear Spring. You save the auditorium to be available not only for school use but community meeting use and whatever might be available. We would look at mothballing. The elementary school, again, just like with Hancock, excuse me, with Cascade, minimal use of utilities, maintain temperatures so we eliminate extreme highs, extreme lows, monitor the building envelope, the roof, the doors, the windows, and hold the building to see if we need it later. If the development in Hancock really kicks off and we need that building, again, we could go in and do a redevelopment in that building, refurbish the building. It is approximately, its adjusted age is approximately, I think, 44 years old, so it is one of our older buildings in the system. Financial savings for this recommendation is just about 1.5 million, just a tick under 1.5 million. Actually, the staff saving is 19 positions, and is about 1.5 million. There's a potential utility savings, about $60,000 stemming from minimizing utility use at the elementary school, and that is offset by about a $90,000 increase in transportation costs to add the two routes that were recommended under the superintendent's report.
In the last slide, because the planning includes a multi-year transition period, it honors the ability of parents and students to make that choice about when it is appropriate for them to move to the consolidated school. We're aware there's a number of ways that this can happen. It's unfortunately not unique. Multiple schools in our area and around us have consolidated, and they can take it slowly and carefully with consideration for the people who are involved. We also can provide additional counseling services before, during, and after a consolidation that could work together to try and help it become a single community working together. So we feel like giving parents and students that ability to determine when it's appropriate to them allows for better mental health and social support for students and their families.
And just kind of to conclude our PowerPoint presentation, and also a reminder to the public and to the board, beyond the work session and questions that I'm sure are going to follow here in just a few minutes, there will be two public hearings. The first one will be at Smithburg High School on May 25. That is an in-person event. There'll be directions. What will happen when you're there, well, obviously, you have to have limited seating in the auditorium, and people will rotate in and out of the auditorium to maintain appropriate numbers and allow time for staff to clean between guests that are coming to present information. Even though the event is at Smithburg, and we're trying to make that convenient for Cascade parents, because Smithburg would obviously be their home high school, Hancock parents are welcome to come to the Smithburg hearing as well, so it's not isolated just to the Cascade hearing. Parents from either community can come to either hearing. That gives two different dates, in case one evening is more inconvenient or you have other plans. And the Hancock area will be there on Wednesday, May 26, in the auditorium, also Smithburg High School will be in the high school auditorium. Again, we have a whole process for how groups of people will move in and out of the auditorium. And right now, board members, you have tentatively on your agenda, again, for public information to make the decision regarding the Fiat recommendations, the superintendent's modifications to those recommendations, and any changes that you might make on June 15 at 6 o'clock sometime during that meeting. It wouldn't necessarily be exactly at 6 o'clock. I know the board continues to want to hear from the public. Just up on the screen now is how you can sign up for the Smithburg public hearing, also for the Hancock public hearing. There is a sign-up form. We'll work with people. We'll be there the entire two and a half hours. If you can't be there at 5, get there at 6, 6:30, 7. We'll be sure that you're heard. If there's more speakers than there's time allowed, the board could consider whether they extend the hearing beyond 7:30 and/or select another date beyond the two selected dates for the hearing. And on the last slide, because the decision will be made at the second board meeting in June, we are soliciting any written comments. If you can't make it to the public hearing, or you'd like to provide a written comment in addition to speaking, there are two avenues. You can email the board at the address there, Public Feedback, or also write to the board, you know, by traditional mail, and the address of the Board of Education is there, and we'll be sure that all that information is provided to all the board members. So with that, appreciate your patience getting through all that. We'll be glad to entertain any questions you have.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
I have a question from Board Member Peter Bickford, who's listening. If Hancock stays open, what would be the likely impact on current Williamsport and South High students after redistricting?
If Hancock remains open as it is, what would be the impact on South High and Williamsport? Well, the potential, it would depend on what the next step is. I mean, one of the reasons for not selecting Hancock to stay open and Clear Spring to close and moving the Clear Spring students to Hancock is that Clear Spring's a little bit more centrally located. So a possibility for the board, even if Hancock does move, we're still going to have additional seat capacity at Clear Spring High School and/or if the board chose to move the middle school to Clear Spring Middle School, we still would have additional seat capacity. You could charge the Fiat Committee to go back in and do a redistricting that looks at how we reduce the numbers, particularly at South High, potentially at Williamsport, and students might move from those schools to Clear Spring. I think without Hancock moving into Clear Spring District, I think the board is going to have a significant decision to make. Do you continue to allow facility, both the middle school and the high school, at Clear Spring High School, to operate under 60% capacity, well under 60% capacity? And I think Mr. Bickford's question might be, the impact would be if Hancock doesn't move to Clear Spring, it presents an opportunity to move South High students, or Williamsport students, or North High students. I don't know who else is contiguous to that, but I think those would be the three possibilities to Clear Spring to take advantage of that space.
And it'd be worth noting, and Chad and Rob are here as well, but to my knowledge, the South High attendant zone does not touch the Clear Spring attendant zone. So you're either talking about a double move or re-carving that attendant zone to make South High touch Clear Spring.
Mr. Staffer?
Concerning Cascade, I've got a series of questions here. I won't ask them all at this time, but we'll start with this one about Cascade. Do we know how the current students at Cascade will be allocated to Old Forge and Smithburg? How many are going? Have we looked at that, the projection of how many would go to Old Forge, how many go to Smithburg?
Well, I think the decision would need to be made if the board's willing to close the facilities first. I think part of the charge is to identify possibly where the children would go, so we believe they'd go to Old Forge or Smithburg. I think, as I noted earlier, to me, it makes common sense to go back to, at least as a starting point, to go back to the original Old Forge line, which was the 2010 redistricting where those students were moved to Cascade. I would recommend we go back to that line. When we do that, Chad or Rob, I think we almost split the number exactly in half. So approximately 65 students or so would go to Old Forge, about 65 students or so would go to Smithburg Elementary School, if we use that as the dividing line. But first step would be the decision to close the school. Second step would be to establish redistricting and go through that process, but that seems like that would be a natural decision.
My second question, the staff at Cascade, how will, and I feel to see how we're saving money from closing, because we're not really getting rid of staff. We're just going to put them, reallocate them to other schools, so I'm not sure of that. But how will the staff at Cascade, present staff from the administrator on down, how will they be allocated in this shift?
Well, we'd go through, and I think knowing, you know, two years in advance, or, you know, knowing by June, you would have opportunities to move yet this year, although we'd have to backfill the positions while the school was open. But, you know, we regularly have 40, 50, 60, 70 elementary openings. Is that an exaggeration? And plus the growing needs with grant funding, things like that. Elementary, you know, we need teachers pre-K through 5 every year, counselors, physical education, art, all those resources. So those people would fill current jobs that are, jobs that become open. And we go through the traditional transfer language. The way we save money is through efficiency. So as we're running classes at one school that's under capacity or under a reasonable class size, as students fill that in, and you don't need to add an additional teacher, you save a teacher. And that's how we would pick up the savings at both Old Forge and Cascade, or Old Forge and Smithburg with the Cascade closing. As Dr. Palmer noted, you know, this seesawing of classes, and it happens both at Old Forge and at Smithburg. One year, second grade's three rounds, and the next year it's two rounds. Well, one of the second-grade teachers has to move to wherever the bubble moved, and that doesn't happen in one grade level. Sometimes there'll be two or three moves in the same year, as that has to bounce around. I know we've had teachers there that in three years, they taught three different grade levels because of the ongoing, you know, fluctuating between two and three-round schools. If we had three full rounds at both Old Forge and Smithburg, they'd probably have extremely small class sizes in schools that don't have a very high farm rate, and while that'd be great, we don't have the resources to support that at this time. So the savings is going to come from those staff members being redeployed other places, which would be a true savings and could be added to recurring money, could be added to reoccurring money, and it's annual money. It's the other important note. It's not one-time money, it's recurring money and annual money. Or, so it could be true savings and used differently, or the staffing could just be used in other locations where we need staffing. So net savings to the budget, there'd be zero net savings to the budget. Net increase of resources to other schools that need support that we can't provide right now, I can't measure what that would be. I think it'd be beyond measure.
I'll just ask this last question, and I'll stop for a while. If we mothball Cascade, that's in your recommendations, that's a possibility, how much will it cost to maintain it?
We've allocated that. That is already in the million-dollar savings, so if we didn't already add the cost in for mothballing, that million-dollar savings would be less. But in our projections, we've already accounted for the cost to mothball the building. So we'd maintain the server that runs the security cameras. We would keep the badge swipe system working. We'd obviously keep it at a, you know, moderate temperature, you know, in the winter and the summer, as Mr. Prue has indicated, to avoid mold, moisture issues, that type of thing. If you turn the heat off in the building, even if you drain the systems, a lot of times you'll get warp into the tile, thing like that, so we would avoid that. I mean, one possibility, for that to grow substantially, maybe there's 500 or 600 houses built on the fort at some point, maybe that facility gets sold and we build a school on the fort property. But none of that is in the works for the fort property right now that we see, and certainly not in the works for any time in the foreseeable future. So the cost for maintaining the building has already been accounted for in the million-dollar savings, is my point. Same way with the Hancock. If you look at the Fiat report, you'll see a slightly higher number in savings, annual savings or annual money and staffing to be redeployed. The number in my report is lower, because we've accounted for the additional buses that we've added to accommodate the transportation issues.
I just worry about the security of the building. I mean, I know after Conica Jig was abandoned, it got pretty bad shape. Of course, it was returned to the county, correct?
It should have been sold immediately, and they, you know, but, I mean, again, we had Job Development Center, we hung on to it for like 10 years before we got rid of that. I should have got rid of it immediately, and we probably kept it open 10 years longer than it should have been kept open. The board could have reaped savings there for 10 or 20 years.
I'll let my colleagues ask some now.
Kevin, I saw your hand.
Sorry, one moment. So with the potential combination of the elementary school and then the middle school to create a K through 8 facility, and whilst, if the board gives the option for those kids to have open enrollment into Clear Spring Middle, specifically for the middle school component, what I foresee is like a lot of students following their friends might go and all, since they would have to go there in high school. So wouldn't that create another problem with enrollments falling below that specific number, or whatever the board envisions? Because if there's a trend of more students leaving to middle school, wouldn't that create lower enrollments, possibly like having class sizes of middle school probably like less than 10 even, or how does that work?
Well, I think in my recommendation, I was just trying to create an option for parents. So instead of the full closure of the middle school and high school, we just do the high school. That's where I see the greatest need. I think people are already voting with their feet, Mr. Baikum. We have nine students out of Clear Spring Middle School, or sorry, Hancock Middle Senior High School, and one student in as we look at special permissions. Mr. Evans and Mr. Staffer, you witnessed four students just in the senior class that are counted as if they were at Hancock. They have not been at Hancock, other than for extracurricular activities, in two years. They left there in their sophomore year to go and attend STEM Middle College, but they are counted in the numbers, they are counted in these projections, students that attend STEM Middle College. I don't know how many juniors are currently at the community college, but those students also are counted in these numbers. So again, students are electing to leave Barbara Ingram, Tech High, those things anyhow, and that's true of other schools as well. So it's not to create a situation that would close the middle school, it's to create options for parents, rather than making that decision that, you know, if they want their sixth, seventh, and eighth graders stay at Hancock, we would continue to maintain a middle school programming there for them. You know, certainly possible as kids go, other kids would go. It's also possible as kids stay, other kids would stay at Hancock. There's no way for us to predict that. But I was simply trying to create more options for parents. And again, where I saw the greatest need was at the high school level. I think that's where we see the greatest disparity. You know, I can speak from a great deal of experience from this. I was there at Hancock as principal for four years, again, when the enrollment was closer to 400. At that time, with a middle school of 200 and a high school of 200, I felt then as principal, there were many things that I could not provide our children. To Mr. Akers' point, you don't create three ninth-grade honors English classes, you create one, and the students got to work it into their schedule depending upon what else they have. We call them singletons when you're developing a master's schedule, and Hancock is a whole bunch of singletons. One course offered one time during one period of the day. As there's another course that's in conflict with that, a student needs to make a choice, because there's not going to be a second section offered. At a bigger school like Clear Spring, there might be two or three of the same course offered. What, I can't get first period, I can get fifth period, or I can get sixth period? You know, obviously, at a north or south, there's 10, 12, 13 of some of these sections of the exact same course. these sections of the exact same course. The other thing to consider, and when I was there at Hancock, I felt bad about, many of the teachers had four and five different preps, you know, four and five different preps. Not just English nine, but they taught English nine honors, English nine grade level, taught English eleven, and then maybe AP English. Math was probably the worst or the most challenging because we didn't have any doubletons of math. So, at that time, we had a seven-period, well, they had an eight-period day, but you taught for six periods. There would be, many of the math teachers would have six, six different preps. So, that makes it challenging for a teacher. And to have an excellent lesson, to have two or three preps, you can put a lot of time and effort and energy behind two or three preps, or more time and effort and energy refining, making it an excellent lesson. As you get five and six preps, it gets much tougher to keep up with an algebra course, an algebra two course, a geometry course, a pre-calc course, a calculus course, a financial literacy course, and tomorrow I have all those courses again. And on Monday, I have all those courses again. And on Tuesday, I have all those courses again. And you're making up a lot of lesson plans, and that's all running through one person. That's also happening now, but it's going to happen greater. As these numbers go down and down and down, slowly, the staff is going to be reduced as the need is greater in other areas with increase in enrollment. So, it's possible a student could have the same teacher for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade English at some point, or seventh grade, ninth grade, eleventh grade English. Could be great. They might be the greatest teacher in the world, it might be a wonderful thing. It could be a challenge, you know, I think for a variety of reasons, silly reasons like teacher-student conflict, but, you know, if it's not the perfect teacher, that might not be the perfect thing. So, just a lot of, lot of things to be considered there. But I can just teach, share from my personal experience there, when a school was almost twice as size as it is now, definitely twice the size that it'll be in five or six years if we allow it to remain open, it was challenging then. I can't imagine what it would be in another three or four years. And probably Ms. Mulaney could talk to scheduling, Dr. Akers is a scheduling guru, how challenged it is to schedule nothing but singletons. You also have to work with your cross-staffs. So, your phys ed teacher, your art teacher, your music teacher is working both with middle school and high school students, which just locks a lot of other things into place as you look at some of that.
I understand, but really like what my question was getting at is in the proposed combination of the school, if a lot of students do decide to choose the option to go to Clear Spring, how small is too small for those class sizes before attentively, or I guess in your opinion, that the board should consider possibly moving forward with other measures?
I think that would be up to a future board to, to consider. You know, right now, we're looking at classes thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three coming into the middle school. You know, you probably will divide them two ways, although we have classes of close to thirty or over thirty students in some other schools. If more schools, students opt to go, you know, it's going to be a class of, you know, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, depending upon how classes are divided. Again, in middle school, I'm a little less worried about it, but to your point, Mr. Bakum, it could become too small at the middle school as well. I was just trying to create an option that made a transition for parents and left them with more options for middle school for the current time being. Personally believe in the high school is the more immediate challenge. At some point, maybe the middle school will become a more immediate challenge. I understand your question, I just can't completely answer it beyond that.
Thank you. I, I think in Dr. Michael maybe as well, and I'm probably speaking out of my area of expertise, but it also gives an opportunity for families to decide if you, the board would decide to close the high school only. Offering that option at sixth grade creates another opportunity of where do I want my child to transition to that new environment? Do I want them to transition at the sixth grade level or at the ninth grade level? Gauged on, basically on the social, emotional needs of their own child, and whether they think that, that, when that change is mitigated the best.
Mr. Evans, you had a question?
Yes, I have two quick questions. That link to sign up for public comment, is that going to be something that might be clickable too for, for families?
I'll have to defer that to Aaron.
So, the link is currently available on the homepage of the WCPS website. We've also sent that home to families with a direct communication via email, that they could also reach that by a text message.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was easily accessible as well. And then the only other question I had, I know this is a concern of some of the other board members, as far as the athletics goes at Hancock, is there a rule that says, because I don't think there is one, but I, I very well could be wrong, I really don't know, is there a rule that says that the student can't attend Hancock and play sports at Clear Spring? Is there a rule that says that?
So, I'll start the answer, and I'll let Dr. Akers finish it. But what I understand is, it is possible for athletes to participate in another school. What it has to be is the whole school, the entire school's sports program has to be combined with the other school's entire sports program. So, much like that graphic that you saw where you add the two schools together, the state doesn't want to have, I think, the state doesn't allow schools just to jump around because they're trying to get schools grouped based on size and competition. So, it is possible with all of Hancock Athletics, we remain, Hancock High School remains open, but all of Hancock Athletics are combined with all of Clear Spring Athletics. What they would do is combine that ninth, tenth, eleventh grade enrollment every two years when they do the reseating of the groups, and you would be seated, they still would be a one-A school, but all athletics would have to do that. Now, if a student wanted to go and play a sport, say they want to play tennis, they could apply for special permission to attend Clear Spring because tennis isn't offered at Hancock, and they could be admitted under special permission, and they would be a full-time Clear Spring student. So, I don't know if I'm completely answered the question, and Dr. Akers, please correct me if I said anything inaccurate. No, that's correct. And you can't, I would just add that you can't play football for Hancock and tennis for Clear Spring.
Right.
You know, you, you're either completely at one school or the other.
So, just to clarify then, I think I understood what you're saying. So, the, and I forget what three sports you said are at Hancock off the top of my head, but it is, you know, if it's football, baseball, and softball at Hancock, they, all three of those sports would then have to not be offered at Hancock and then be offered at Clear Spring.
At one of the other schools, there'd be no sports program.
Right, okay.
It would be, because the state would see it as a combined group when they seat them in that list of seating. But what, what I understand is, because we've asked this question a couple of times, can we not just have all the kids play football down there? Go down after school and play football down there? And the answer is yes, but then all basketball's got to come, all volleyball's got to come, all baseball, softball, everything comes. It's not one sport, it's the entire sports program, is what I understand.
Thank you.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes, since Hancock High School has such low numbers, I'm thinking, why couldn't we make Hancock a pre-K through twelve and then allow students to attend, say like they do Barbara Ingram or they do the Tech High? If there's programs at Clear Spring that they prefer and they're not getting at Hancock, why can't they go to Hancock, or Clear Spring?
You can allow that option that way, but again, it doesn't mitigate this issue of extracurricular sports. It doesn't mitigate the issue of singletons within the schedule. It doesn't create additional options at Clear Spring, or, excuse me, at Hancock. We're not just trying to, I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, take a school off the books. That would take a school off the books, and I saw that suggestion come in. My whole thing is about creating educational opportunities for students. That's been my passion since I started working for the school system. I've carried that, my students first, may have said it a couple of different ways over times, that's how I make decisions. So, this isn't about just mushing kids together and trying to eliminate a building. This is about creating educational opportunities for students. Those options all exist right now for students to take advantage of. They can apply for special permission to go to Clear Spring. I'm just trying to provide that opportunity for all students.
And if I can follow up on that, this is something the FIAC committee looked at. A question came up, I think even within one of our first meetings, staff reviewed it. You have to also have to consider that we're two-rounded Hancock Elementary in all grades, pre-K to five. So, you need fourteen classrooms just for your elementary. There's twenty-five teaching spaces at Hancock Middle Senior High School. So, if you move the elementary over and take over those fourteen rooms for elementary, you're now left with eleven rooms for the remaining six, seven grades. So, and again, those classes are, you know, you know, if you're splitting two round at middle school, there's not room to combine all the students into one building. There's seat capacity, but because of the variance of what's needed by rounds and variance of different classes to provide a well-rounded education, you don't, you don't have the teaching spaces to do it in the building.
Again, I would just say, you know, that was never our intention to eliminate a building as much as was to provide additional opportunities for students. I'd also remind the board, it's noted in the report, I mean, this is not unlike what's happened in Allegheny County. Flintstone High School, we played soccer against them when I was a soccer coach. They were a K to twelve school. They just got too small, too small to offer course offerings to children. Their building was large enough, it wasn't a building issue. They were too small to offer course offerings to their children. Similarly, Bruce Bell, you know, a couple of schools have combined and merged a couple of different times, and now they're down to three high schools. You know, in, in Allegheny, there were seven or eight high schools at one time. We played all of them in soccer. You know, the big boys of Fort Hill and Allegheny were, you know, football powerhouses, but the other schools were all, all big soccer schools. Saying, I don't know if you played them in your days, but, and back to my Clear Spring days as soccer coach, all those schools have changed for exactly what you just described. Many of them were K to twelve schools, and they closed down to being an elementary simply because of size, or an elementary middle because of the size and the course offerings available at the high school level.
Dr. Michael, you've spoken a lot this afternoon about the declining enrollment, and some in the public have questioned the accuracy of the enrollment figures. And they say that the decline in enrollment that we're seeing is due to COVID. So, could you, for transparency, please tell the public where the enrollment numbers come from? And you've mentioned that we're seeing this decline in enrollment over a period in some instances of a decade.
Correct. I mean, if you look at those graphs, it's pretty apparent that this hasn't happened just in this one year. Also, the numbers we used in, in our report, we noted the 2019 numbers. The projections were based off of 2019 numbers. We basically have skipped over COVID as if it doesn't exist for the purposes of projections. And again, we looked primarily at 2019 numbers, September 2019 numbers. And in our projections, again, we projected the numbers without COVID being a factor. Also, in our projections, and board members, you need to consider this, there are changes coming, substantial changes coming. So, STEM Middle College, where we witnessed last night, four seniors that we have on the books for Hancock have not stepped foot in Hancock, other than extracurricular activities since their sophomore year, yet they're counted in these numbers as if they're there every day. There's a, some number of juniors that are that way, and that could be a growing program because I know it was only one or two Hancock students, and I think we're seeing more students that lacked that option because there's not course offerings like AP and those advanced opportunities to take advantage of. With Kerwin, we're going to see juniors and seniors that are college and career-ready. Every single junior and senior in Washington County that's college and career-ready can attend HCC free of charge. So, we're going to see some type of factor that's going to change, not only at Hancock, but at Clear Spring and across the county with that. What portion of students will go, I don't know, but that's new in Kerwin. It's a way of providing free college education to all juniors and seniors if they're college and career-ready. So, that's a change to come. Growing potential of STEM, growing potential of STEM, excuse me, the eleventh and twelfth grade if you're college and career-ready. Hopefully, the additional opportunities that we're providing at Tech High and at Barbara Ingram, I think we'll see Barbara Ingram grow another hundred students. Their challenge is in their arts area. Now, those students will come from all over the county as they grow, but I think Tech High's going to grow well beyond capacity now with our new diesel program. And some of the programs, we're really stepping up to catch up with alternative energy, autonomous cars, the advanced programs we have there. Again, only be a handful from Hancock, but we're going to see, hopefully, pull students from all areas to help reduce some of the strain, particularly on north, south, Williamsport. And the third thing I would say is our new ABLE program, our virtual learning program will be here to stay starting in September. It won't be our anytime learning program, so parents that are anticipating that, it'll be substantially different than that. It'll be rigorous, it'll be four to five hours synchronous a day, there'll be two or three hours of asynchronous work to do. It won't be for every child, but most of the districts and my peers are predicting ten percent or more students will attend their virtual school in the fall. Well, ten percent for us would be two thousand-plus children will not be in our brick-and-mortar schools starting in September. So, not only would that be true across the county, it'll be true for Clear Spring and Hancock. In these projections, we have not accounted for any change for STEM Middle College. In fact, those kids are counted in there. Chad does some voodoo that he accounts for historic, historically what happens with special permissions and what historically happens with students going to Tech High and things like that, as he makes his projections, and Barbara Ingram, other programs. There's no way for Chad to make a prediction on the ABLE program because it hasn't had any history yet. So, those numbers assume every child will stay there in Hancock, and none of them will be signed up for virtual. So, I, I think the numbers are probably overstated both at Clear Spring and Hancock by some amount. I don't know how much. So, there's a lot happening here as we're looking at this, and none of it adds to more students in these schools. But to your point, we, we have written off this COVID year, it is not to drive and force. It's not suddenly in COVID we're down, and that's why we need to make this decision. We looked at this with pre-COVID numbers and used pre-COVID numbers to make our projections. But there's a lot of other things happening beyond COVID.
Dr. Setmore?
To dovetail on what you just said though, wouldn't ABLE and Apex provide access to courses that Hancock students aren't already taking?
I think we have students already taking advantage of some of that coursework, and it would be a way to fill in gaps, but it is not my recommendation for all students. I think to be an ABLE student, while I think we might have a couple thousand students sign up for that, or parents sign their students up, it is not the preferred learning style for one hundred percent of the students. So, again, I'm looking for educational opportunities for all students. And, you know, I'm sure you, I know if you've had some online coursework or blended learning work at the college level, it's just not appropriate for every student. So, I'm, I'm trying to create that opportunity for all students. But it is, again, yes, technology, you know, where ABLE courses always be taught by Washington County Public School people, I don't know. We might contract that out at some point to the greatest fifth-grade teacher in the world because we'll be able to buy that at some point. Technology will definitely change, and, and COVID has accelerated the change of how technology's going to affect public education at some point. But right now, it's not perfect for every student to be an ABLE, not by, not by a long shot, nor in Apex as a learning resource.
No, I'm just saying that it would broaden the access for students who wanted those particular courses.
Yes, if they're signed up in the ABLE course, yes, ABLE program.
Yes.
I had a couple of verbal inquiries, and, and you mentioned this earlier in your presentation about Smithburg, and you said it the other night at the last board meeting, that the portables are going to Smithburg regardless of, of what happens to Cascade. But the two verbal inquiries I had were the fact that the public, and it got me to wondering about the public perception. The perception of these two individuals that contacted me by phone was that you're talking about closing Cascade, a brick-and-mortar school, and yet you're going to, and some of these kids are going to be going to Smithburg, and I'm just repeating what their perception was, and you're going to be putting kids in portables at Smithburg where no kids are in portables right now at Smithburg. And so, I just wonder, it's kind of like the enrollment thing, how would you respond to that? I mean, if that's the perception that those two people have, I wonder how many others in the community have that same perception? I mean, I know what it is about trying to do with the rounds and stuff, but how do we sell that to those, to those individuals like that who, who see that connection?
I'm not a hundred percent certain of your question, Mr. Staffer, but we have sixty-five portables. We had about eighty, eighty-five portables at one time. We've tried to eliminate portables, replace them with newer portables like the ones at Western Heights, like the ones we're getting at South High, with a much better design, kind of a whole platform and inside-school type facility. Portables are used all over the country, they're used in every school system in Maryland. There's portables already at Old Forge that have been there for many years. There's portables already at Old Forge that have been there for many years, we're adding to other schools that are small schools. So part of that concept is to try to make Smithburg the equivalent of a three-round school because it's this tweener, between two and three rounds, so it makes that available. It accounts for, that school was built prior to having full-day K, so it anticipates years that it's three rounds, there would be three kindergartens, some years it's two kindergartens. And that school was also built before we had pre-K, and at some point, we might have three-year-olds attending schools, maybe not all schools. So those are all possibilities. Portables are used by, in schools differently. A lot of places use portables for fifth graders. Some schools use portables for specialized programs, you know, PTA room even, a gate room, facility where students may or may not be in the portable all day long. Some teachers love portables, like being in the portable. You know, some, some portables are used for art, for music, for things that students would only be there for a portion of the period. Obviously, the teacher would be their teaching station for the day. So we're just using the available portables, rehabbing some of the portables, trying to get a much better design at, at South High, because I see that being a school of 1,600. I don't see that stopping. Even if we do redistricting quickly, it's still going to be 1,600, 1,700, 1,600 or more for several years until redistricting would kick in. So we're trying to make a wise decision there and then also use those available resources to redeploy the portables. So it was an opportunity, and we took advantage of the opportunity to put two portables at Smithburg. Whatever perception they have, I can't share that. Those portables are gone there. My perception is, I won't share my perception. Assuming Cascade remains open, we're still putting two portables at Smithburg Elementary School. So I don't know how they respond to that perception, but it'll make available resources for Ms. Wilson to consider how she would use those.
But still with, with, you know, with the county commissioners pushing, you got to keep the schools open and everything, and then just coincidence, I'll call it, that we're putting two portables at Smithburg, it's just, it's just difficult. I see it as a public relations problem for us, be closing a brick and mortar school. And that doesn't necessarily mean I'm against it or for it. I'm just trying to, in the average person mind, person's mind out there, minds out there, they see brick and mortar school perhaps being closed, portables coming to a school that didn't have portables before. I just see that as a public relations problem for, for us in this predicament, in this situation, that's all.
Mrs. Mayor?
I have another question from Mr. Bickford. How have we gathered input from Hancock students?
Pardon?
He wants to know, how have we gathered input from Hancock students?
From Hancock students, I think with Mrs. Zentmeyer's plea to have input, I think we had a number of teachers take classroom time and had students write to the board. We probably had, I mean, the board members got most of them.
57 texts.
So I would say we got quite a bit of input for students. I mean, while we appreciate student input, Kevin's input, things like that, I mean, many of our students are, including elementary students, I had a whole packet from second graders. I appreciate their input, and I certainly don't know everything, and most of my thoughts are my opinion, but I need to provide direction for a second grader, and while their input's important, it's not going to be the sole guiding factor of my recommendations. So I think it's important, you know, generally, can we predict what children would want? They would not want to leave their school, absolutely not. Does the community want to see their school closed? I know the people that are writing are students of mine when I was there, so I know, I know many of them personally. I mean, I don't feel good about, you know, the school losing their, the community potentially losing their school. I do with great confidence, particularly after finishing the report and after finishing the PowerPoint and the presentation, the prep for today, I am absolutely convinced the superintendent, the right decision is to close Cascade and to move the Hancock High School students to Clear Spring. I am absolutely convinced of that for the best opportunities for the future for those children. I also understand the emotional tug and pull on this, and also understand the challenge the board has in making their decision, and will certainly, you know, will obviously respect that decision of the board. They have a very difficult decision to make. You know, as I said to you, maybe more privately in closed session or something, I could have coached this one out easily and not offended my friends in Hancock, but I'd be doing a disservice for children if we didn't take a hard look at this. And I think that's what the board charged the FEAC committee to do, as part of my responsibility, fulfill that responsibility, to look at that carefully. If I disagreed with FEAC's recommendation, I would speak up and say so, but in general, I support it, and I've offered an alternative for Hancock. So, you know, we appreciate student input, and I think we have a lot of student input. And I think, you know, if you notice the waves of time when they came, I think they were well encouraged to participate, those that wanted to participate, and their general opinion is they don't want to see their school go away, and I think we could predict that. Fears of not being welcomed at Clear Spring, having also been a faculty member at Clear Spring, I can assure you, Clear Spring will welcome Hancock students with open arms, and with after a year or two, with the board was to try to move students back to Hancock, you'd probably have an equal fight to move students back to Hancock after redistricting. So those, I've seen that happen over the period of the last 42 years. A lot of angst and anxiety over redistricting, and after a few years, and people don't even realize redistricting occurred, people would be upset if you asked them to return in opposite direction, so.
Dr. Michael, I have two questions. The first one, I think, would probably be just a yes or no answer. We've had public comment regarding the benefits of small schools, and you've spoken this evening or this afternoon about how a school can be too small. We've heard from you, we've heard from Doctors Palmer and Akers who have noted the challenges of a small school and what might be seen as disadvantages of part-time people, itinerant staff, all of that. Would a consolidated Hancock Clear Spring High School be considered a small school? If we were not redistricting and bringing in anyone other than Hancock Clear Spring students, would that high school still be considered a small school?
Absolutely. I mean, when you look on the one chart that Dr. Akers shared, that is one-fourth, that three-column chart, is one-fourth of the high schools in Maryland. So if we can look at that quickly, maybe I can use some numbers. So they, the state takes all the high schools in Maryland, and, you know, a couple of high schools have been added, obviously, some schools have gone away over time. I don't know what this list numbers, it used to be about 160 high schools in Maryland, and they would put 40 in 1A, 40 in 2A, 40 in 3A, 40 in 4A, and they just, you know, count the schools and divide a line. So you can see right now, this is just three grades. At Mountain Ridge, there's 673 students at the time that they did this, in ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, because they always, they always do it a year out, so they assume those seniors are gone, and that's the way to make it most equal across the state. And it goes all the way down to the smallest school in Maryland, which I can't read the name up there, but the vocational school that has six students, grades nine, 10, 11. I think we looked that school up, it's not a school that I'm familiar with, it's some type of alternative school, it must have less than 10 students in the whole school. And the only, they have one sport, is all they have, but since they have a sport, they had to be, they're an MSPAP member, they had to be identified as the school on this list. When you combine Hancock and Clear Spring, as Dr. Akers noted, based on this information, it would move it up to that orange line right below Bohemia Manor. And they still would be just about halfway in a 1A school, and there are three more divisions larger than them. So I would absolutely say it's in the bottom 12, 13, 14% of all schools in Maryland, and it absolutely would be considered still a small school. As I mentioned, if we do this combination, all it will be, will be that Clear Spring will still be about the size it is today. Without this combination, Clear Spring will be substantially smaller. Clear Spring will fall, you know, from where it is right now, 387, three grades, I don't know, it's going to drop, you know, five or six, seven spots from what it is today. It'll be in the bottom third.
There's currently 199 schools that make up 1A through 4A.
So about 50 schools in each, okay.
When you listed the schools that were consolidated, all except for one created a new identity, do we have any plans when combining those students to do that?
It's certainly something the board could consider. I've been asked by that because I've attended three Hancock home games, two Hancock home games, and I saw Hancock last night at North High. So I run into, you know, some of the Hancock staff and, and coaches there that I know, and I think that's actually a suggestion from some of the students. If we go there, could there be a name change, or mascot change, or something like that? That's certainly something the board could consider. It, I don't think it's appropriate in this for me to make that recommendation, but certainly something to consider because at that point, you also want to involve the Clear Spring students and, and community members to talk about that. You know, in hindsight, when they were building schools, should they build a school in Big Pool or somewhere between the two areas and, and build a reasonable-sized high school that was very similar? I know Carroll County went through this function a number of years ago, they tried to kind of level all their schools about the same size, and then as they played each other in sports or opportunities, they were trying to spread around, it made it very nice. In Washington County, we're kind of getting spread out again. We're going to have a school of less than 100, and we're going to have a school of over 1,600 within the same county, and that makes it pretty interesting to offer the same opportunities. But as far as mascot or change the name, the board's familiar with the name change process, that, that's not part of my recommendation, but that's certainly something that could be considered.
I have another question I'd like to ask, and then we'll go.
Go ahead.
Okay. As elected Board of Education members, in addition to being responsible for providing the best possible educational opportunities for the children of the county, we're also expected to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars allocated to us by our funding partners. So at their current enrollments, could you estimate about how much additional funding would be needed to provide Hancock High and Cascade Elementary with the services and educational opportunities that would be equitable to the other schools in the county?
For me, I don't think it's a matter of services. I mean, for Cascade, certainly have a counselor there five days a week, that's the availability of a person. In order to provide that, you would need additional money, but we have challenges at other schools that have a five-day-a-week counselor at a school with 500 children right now. So maybe if we need a counselor for, for 130 children at Cascade five days a week, the school with 500, with one counselor, needs three or four counselors. So it's hard for me to answer that question. How do we just solve this one single issue with additional resources? It's not solving our countywide challenge because it's greater than just these two schools. That's why, and again, for me, I look solely at educational opportunities first. However, with all the budgeting we do, you can't ignore, they're looking at $2.5 million, and the board is starving for recurring money, recurring money. This year, we have $1 million in recurring money of new money sent to the, to the Board of Education between our partners of the state and our partners at the county, $1 million. This decision would generate $2.5 million every year indefinitely if we chose not to redeploy the staff. But it's still redeploy, it's still reoccurring money in that we have it and we can reuse it and reuse it and reuse it. So it's, at Hancock, I could add 10 more teachers, we could have more classes of one or two or three students, but I have other schools, even including South High, North High, very large schools, they have a class of five, six, seven kids. Sometimes they can run it, sometimes they have to cancel it because they have another class that's 30, 35, you know, if we let it run, or they need to create, you know, a fifth section or sixth section or eighth section. So I can offer more and more and more to make sure that they have all the classes they possibly need. Someone else is still suffering until we have a lot more money. I think we believe the average class size at South in just grade level, we were looking at one subject, Dr. Akers, I think it was grade level, social studies, I don't remember what.
24 sections, and it was like 28 students per section, and it was getting up to
24 sections of a social studies course, 28 kids on average, and we're talking about our highest poverty high school in Washington County. You know, I really feel the need to bring that number down, 24, 23, something like that, for grade-level students. I don't have any issue running honors courses at 28, 30, 32, and I'm sure those kind of choices are being made, but while I'm doing that at one school, at other schools, we're running schools with, you know, 10, 12 students, and Hancock even less than that. So adding more resources, I can provide the courses. I can't provide the experience of additional kids in your classroom, because even that ends up being a little bit different. For the teachers here, if you remember the days when all of our spring sports would leave at 3 o'clock or 2:30 or something for an away game, you know, well, half your class left. You think that'd be an opportunity. Often, that was a challenge because you didn't want to present new materials, so you'd work to catch kids up or something like that, but learning didn't get better, and there's smaller classes all the time. And I think that can happen at, you know, if I'm just teaching one-on-one, you'd think that would be perfect, but it might be a detriment that we don't have the interaction of the whole room of students, which is a big part of instruction right now. We do a lot of collaborative learning, a lot of peer teaching, that's just the way of the world and how the world's gone even in the workforce. So I can't answer your question exactly because it's more than just providing the five-day-whatever, and it's more than just more course offerings, just simply because of how small we are.
Thank you. Mr. Staffer?
It talks about in your recommendations, adding two extra buses for Hancock. All the buses at Hancock now are contractors, right?
Yes.
I think.
I think except for special ed buses that might service that area.
If we added those two extra buses, would, are we looking at trying to get contractor buses or county buses? And how would the current driver shortage in the county affect that idea?
Well, I think we probably would offer them as contract routes. I think all the contractors are going to gain miles out of this if this were, change were, were made. We're still making our elementary run, which will be an elementary-middle school run, so we're still covering all the Hancock district for that run. For the other run, while it might be a little shorter just to get to Hancock, you then would have the miles down to Clear Spring and then back, the deadhead miles back to your location, which we pay for, and all that's been accounted in the savings for Hancock. For the bus driver shortage, I'm hoping our most recent change, including additional pay for the contractors, which all this is unrelated to this closure in a way, has started, has started now, as we're starting to see some fruits of that. So we've been running classes of two, three drivers at a time. Mr. Pre, you have to help me. I think we just started two classes or about to start two classes with seven, eight people.
I think so, and Mr. Johnson's here. I think seven are in that class.
Do you?
About 16 people.
And when was the last time we had 16 people in class at the same time?
About 16.
And you've been here for how long? So Mr. Johnson's been here for three years. We have not run a class of 16 in the last three years, even though we've had the openings. And as a result of the changes the board made a couple of weeks ago, we picked up 16 people in class. Now, not all of them are likely not becoming drivers or becoming drivers for us, but that's encouraging signs because we've only announced this in the last three or four weeks. So we're, a lot of our advertising, you know, we start giving the signing bonuses, we're paying people to be in training. I'm hoping to drop bus driver shortage, which this change is still two years, you know, September '22, so we still have 15, 16 months, you know, to address that. And we're talking about, you know, two additional buses.
And we provide the training for the contractors as well, so they're getting paid while they're training through us, and then they're available to be hired as trained drivers by our contractors.
I have one last question. While I understand how sound the reasoning is behind this, in case no one's noticed, we are masked up for a pandemic. Is there any way, especially for bullet number two in your recommendation number three on page seven, that we could move that timeframe out at least one more year until we embrace recovery from the pandemic?
You're looking in the, you're looking in the booklet, not the slides.
Yeah, I'm in the book.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at my slides, looking at slide seven, I'm thinking, I, I don't think that relates to that.
It's page, it's where we, they remain open and they can go to Clear Spring. The second one is the rising ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. Couldn't we just stay for one year where we are until we heal?
Well, my hope is that starting this September, we'll be back to normal. Right now, we are one of Right now, we are one of four districts that are back five days a week to any student that wants to return. Every day, the governor's changed in the rules, and what people don't understand about what the governor's rule changes are, they don't always directly affect schools unless he says schools. So we've been in contact with Maryland, with our local health department. They're telling us to sit tight, those rules right now, they're not sure apply to us. There's a Maryland State Department meeting, Health Department meeting tomorrow, which we're hoping to get written clarity out of by early next week before we make any changes. But I think next year will be basically a normal year for all of our schools, I hope. If wearing masks is the most that we have to do, I mean, we're down to three-foot distancing in elementary right now. Even in high school, secondary schools, our numbers now have declined to the point that we could move to three-foot distancing. Our recommendation is any place, elementary or secondary, to stay at six feet, because at six feet with a mask, we don't have to quarantine you. If you get within that distance, or our elementaries that are a lot of closer than three feet, or six feet, in some cases, there is a risk of quarantining people. I think next year's going to be a very normal year.
I guess because I had the opportunity to speak with Hancock middle and senior high school students in a group, and talk to them, there has just been so much turmoil in their lives in this past year to add one more thing this year.
And that would be true if we were making this change for this September. Remember, we're talking about September a year away. So this is still, you know, I can't do my math here today, 16 months away. You know, this is not for, you know, going right out of the pandemic, we're going right straight into redistricting. This is still another whole school year away. For this to start just for three grades of students, because the seniors can stay, that allows the transition. The middle school students don't go anywhere. That allow, and have the option to choose to go.
They do have the option.
Yeah, so that allows an option to stay. So we're not moving from the FEAC recommendation of 6th through 12th grade, the whole group moving a year away, not this September, the following September. That plan now, my recommendation is only look at 9th through 12. And for the seniors, that would be rising seniors during that year, they actually still can stay in Hancock. So I think this is like knocks us back to three levels below where we are in the original FEAC recommendation. I think as you let them stay another year, we're just losing out on more opportunities for students, and I don't think that's, I can't make that recommendation. The board certainly could make that recommendation if they choose, chose to vote that way.
Anyone else? I have another question for you. Okay, I'm going back to some public comment. There are those who have claimed that Hancock schools have been neglected by WCPS. They say that county tax dollars have not gone west, and that popular programs like the high school ag program have been removed from the high school. Are there any options besides redistricting that might significantly increase the enrollment in Hancock?
I mean, I think we've looked at that carefully. Let me, you've asked about four questions in that mix. Off the top of my head, the per pupil allotment there, Mr. Prue, or Robert Chad, somebody, maybe I've got Eric and David here, they can find that quickly. I mean, if Hancock's been neglected, other than Marshall Street and Job Development Center, it's our most expensive student, per student. The amount is how much? So $21,000 plus dollars for students at the middle school, high school. I think we have, like, Boonsborough High School, I want to say, is just somewhere between $10,000 and $11,000. I mean, if I was to resource Boonsborough High School at the rate that we're resourcing Hancock, I would have to add $7 or $8 million a year to resource Boonsborough High School as I do Hancock High School. So I think to say that they're under-resourced would be inaccurate. I think it's the economy of scale that makes it challenging. It is not the lack of resources. Again, if we can run classes of two, or three, or four, or five, or six at Hancock, we should be able to run those same-sized classes at every school. Yet those classes are canceled at most schools, because they don't have the staffing to run them. So we're losing opportunities that way, and it's, again, it's the economy of scale, it's the amount of staffing we have available. As far as things like the ag completer, we filled the ag position immediately behind an individual that chose to move on his own to a different position. People believe that we moved it, that is not true, and never been true. And we backfilled that position. It since has died the death of its own. Again, the enrollment is so small, we just couldn't justify continuing that. As to something that we'd move up there, I mean, Tech High, we make tremendous investment, same lady Barbara Ingram, in very, very unique programs, and it takes children from all different schools to fill those up. So if we were to create a program that had a strong enough pull, students would have to come from Smithburg and Boonsborough, and, you know, from much greater distances away than what we're recommending Hancock to Clear Spring. They'd have to come to Hancock, because there's no one program that, that all of Clear Spring is suddenly going to go to Hancock. Five or six kids might go from Clear Spring, a couple of kids from Williamsport, and you would need a program, you know, not one program's going to bring whatever it would hold, 15 or 20. You would need five or six programs that would bring, you know, 9, 10, 11, 12, or 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 graders there to make a difference. I think, I think that's wishful thinking. I would love to say there is. We have thought and talked about that for 10 years here, and we don't see that. In fact, the programs that are there, we just see continued decline. Several principals in a row have been offered to change those programmings and make them different, and some of them have, and we've changed different completer programs. But again, the numbers have just continued to shrink so small, we just can't maintain them.
And if, if I may, Dr. Michael and President Williams, we have 37 unduplicated CTE programs in our county, and they're very balanced. So to Dr. Michael's point, when we look at our clusters and our percentages of students that are choosing those completers, there's not one that sticks out. So to take the type of student movement back to Hancock, it would take several of those CTE programs, because each one of them only attracts a certain percentage of students. So there is not one program that we could put up at Hancock, or any school really in our county, that would attract a number of students to change the enrollment.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
And Mrs. Williams, I think, also to add to your question about resources, factor two of the Facilities Enrollment Advisory Committee report, based on the COMAR review points, is on the assessment of the facility. And on page 30 of the FEAC recommendation, actually highlights capital dollars that have been spent at Clear Spring, or, excuse me, at Hancock Middle Senior High School. In the last 10 years, it's received a roof replacement, a window and door replacement, an HVAC replacement. We did a substantial security vestibule upgrade there, and we also added the greenhouse in attempt to, in part to save the, the ag program.
Thank you. Mr. Bookham?
I'm sorry if I could just add also, just by comparison, Hancock Middle Senior High has 30 certificated staff to, to serve 235 students. Looking over at Clear Spring, they have 38 staff serving 470 students. So just that ratio, you know, what we're spending on staff, you know, at Hancock is much higher than it is at, at other schools.
Thank you, Dr. Akers. Mr. Bookham, you had a question?
Yep, I do. Thank you. There's a multiple community, and like even some student concerns over transportation, and relating to like inclement weather and what happens on the highways. I know you addressed this in your report, but can you talk, talk for the community? What, what plans you have to address in circumstance if a situation of inclement weather does occur, which prevents transportation? Or also, like, what would you do if a lane closure does happen on the highways?
So I think we could maintain our Hancock zone, which we have a Cascade zone, we could maintain our Cascade zone. We rarely use that. The weather generally, what comes from the west generally keeps coming to us, or actually a lot of our storms now seem to come up from the south. And where, where we generally have more road issues, there's more Boonsborough. Cascade is a little bit more interesting in that just at higher elevation, sometimes we do have some greater issues with weather. So I think we would maintain our zones, which we don't use very often, maybe, I don't know, if we use them once a year, probably.
I can think once, maybe twice in the last four years that I've been assisting in inclement weather discussions.
So we could use the Hancock zone, and those students wouldn't report to school that day, that zone would be closed, much like Hancock would be closed, and we call it a Hancock closure, or Hancock delay. If it was a delay, the students would just show up at Clear Spring two hours later. But again, we rarely use that, generally, we're doing a more countywide closure, or countywide two-hour delay, or two-hour dismissal. As far as the traffic on 70, we travel 70 with multiple buses from multiple schools every single day. There is the issue of traffic, we do have increasing traffic. I would note, there's a bus from Hancock to Tech High every single day, and has for the last 40, 50 years. When I was at Clear Spring, the bus would go to Hancock, be at Hancock, and then it would stop at Clear Spring to pick up the Clear Spring students to take them on to Tech High. So it was even a longer route back then, as it made two stops. So we've been traveling 70 for, probably since 70 was put in. Use it every day, and we use it every day from Hancock. So we're not talking about Hancock to just Tech High, or Hancock to Barbara Ingram, we're talking about Hancock to Clear Spring. As you look at, there are a couple of spots there where it would be very difficult to reroute. If we knew of an accident in advance, again, we might close that portion. We've closed various areas because of power, things like that. We could use those types of closure issues. Or, once you get to certain segments of 70, you could be rerouted around it, because there's several places that you can get off. The Big Pool exit, you could go around the Fort Frederick side, you could go around the opposite side and go up the mountain by the Country Deli. Prior to that, the Indian Springs exit, you can go off to the left there at the Salt Barracks, and beyond 40, the rest of the way into Clear Spring. On up the next exit, I think even prior to that exit, there's one more opportunity. So this is like a little stretch of road in there, five or six miles, that, you know, if that's where you're held up, you know, there's not an alternative route. But that's really no different than a bus coming from, I don't know, Smithburg uses the 70 to get to Tech High. If they come up, and they're suddenly stopped on 70, and they're between exits, you're stopped, and it'll be true of anyplace else. I'm familiar with the contractor that drove, when I was at Tech High, as assistant principal. I never remember the buses being late in the time that I was at Tech High from Hancock. Certainly, it could have been a couple of times, they were a few minutes late, but they were on time, or returning. Rodney Gaiman's been the principal of both the Tech and Hancock. He couldn't remember any issues, and I've talked to the contractors that I've known that have run that route. And again, other than a few-minute delay here and there, we've been fortunate that we haven't been caught up in any significant delay. But we use 70 every day, we use 81 every day, and, and, you know, it's had potential anywhere for delays, and we would just have to deal with that as it happens.
I just want to follow up and also ask a question. Do you vision, do you vision continued use of virtual days as replacement for snow days, which would serve then to mitigate that, to entirely eliminate that concern?
It's difficult to say, because the state board, at their last board meeting, as I heard what they said, students will all attend in September 180 days of in-person instruction for 1,080 hours. I think is what the board just voted. As superintendents, when we had our meeting following that, we didn't know for sure what that meant, but it sure sounded like virtual days would not be counted for, snow days cannot be counted as virtual days. So I don't know where that's going for the future. Mr. Bookham, we'll just have to wait and see.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We appreciate the board's time and attention. Again, I want to make it absolutely clear from the superintendent's chair, my decision is about providing additional opportunities for students. It is not anything in any negative way about Cascade, Cascade community, Cascade staff, Cascade students, parents, or certainly the Hancock, which I'm much more familiar with. I spent four years of my professional career there. I have many people that I count as friends and colleagues there. Most of the staff that's there, I've hired, or they have retired, that were there when I was there. I think highly of them, excellent educators, strong community support, excellent students, a long list of accomplishments from both of those schools. So my decisions are not personal to any of them. It is strictly looking at the needs of how we can better serve our students with additional opportunities. And, you know, I don't take lightly the decision that the board needs to make, and obviously, again, we'll respect whatever that decision is, and we'll make the best of whatever that outcome is for all of our students. So I know it's a very big decision for the board to make, it was a significant decision for me to make, but again, it's in the best interest of students, in my opinion, but we also respect that the board has a big decision to make. We starting want to encourage the community to sign up for public comment. That is where additional public comment can be shared. All the information that I receive, every email I copy back to the board members that I receive, at this point, I would encourage the community, I kind of feel like I'm out of this process at this point, short of the board having questions. So I would encourage them to write to the address that's listed in the PowerPoint, or write directly to the board, and, and I can assure you that any information that we do receive, Mr. Chris Wells, the keeper of all the information, the board will continue to see, receive ongoing booklets. Would encourage you, if you're going to write to the board, to do so before June 10th. That way, we can make sure that the, all the board members have copies of that information prior to their decision, if that remains on schedule. So that concludes my comments, Mrs. Williams. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Michael. Thank you to all staff members who were here today. Principals, thank you for coming. I'd just like to remind the public of the two upcoming hearings. Both are being held from 5:00 PM until 7:30 PM. Tuesday, May 25th, at Smithburg High School, and Wednesday, May 26th, at Hancock Middle Senior High School. Public is welcome to attend either of those, regardless of where they live. So please make note. There's nothing further? Thank you all.